Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju endio wachea kuekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So, we were just meeting in committee, the whole closed meeting. We discussed two items, one with respect to a corporate organisation update, and one with respect to the property of 5 Lower Union and 55 Ontario Street. So, before we go any further, councillor Bohm, you had a declaration you wanted to make.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and through you. I, Ryan Bohm, of the council, the corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of report 19-105, item four, closed meeting agenda. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have a conflict of interest in this matter insofar as it relates to Utilities Kingston. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, with that, I will ask the clerk for a motion to waive our procedural rules and report, please.
Moved by councillor Hutchison, seconded by councillor McLaren, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting that the rules of bylaw number 2010-1 be waived, and the city clerk report.
Please vote. And that carries.
Moved by councillor Osannick, seconded by councillor Doherty, that Sheila Kidby be appointed as Commissioner of Transportation and Public Works, effective May 1, 2019, and that city staff be directed to amend the existing agreement with Utilities Kingston to reflect the change to ongoing supervision of major infrastructure projects.
Please vote. And that carries. Okay, next, we'll move on to approval of the addits. There are two addits, but we will approve them together. On the first added, we have an additional item for the report number 29, and we also have a motion of congratulations. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Doherty. Thank you.
One more, please.
Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, seeing none, we have no presentations this evening. We do have one delegation. Pavna Varma, Executive Director of the United Way, Kingston, Frontenac, Lennox and Addington, will appear before council to speak to clause one of report number 29 from the CAO with respect to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. Just a reminder to our delegations, you have five minutes.
Thank you, your worship, members of council, staff, members of the public. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to speak about the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan that's being developed. As you see in your report, effective January 1st this year, legislation requires all municipalities to prepare and adopt a Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan by the end of 2020. This plan should address the risks that could potentially lead to crime in the future. As part of this, City of Kingston, Kingston Police and the United Way have met to start the process. The Chief of Police, Angie McNeely, sends her regrets. She was at a recruitment, at a recruit graduation ceremony today. The planning process will identify priorities in our community based on risk factors, vulnerable groups and protective factors. And the plan will focus on four areas: social development, prevention, risk intervention and incident response. We all know that prevention and early intervention is key to addressing the root causes of social issues as well as crime. This fits well with the approach our community has taken to address youth-related issues. And I say this just as an example of how we have addressed the issue of youth homelessness. On your tables, you do have the most recent update on the youth homelessness report. This preventative, preventative approach has resulted in a decline in the number of youth who are absolutely homeless, and an increase in the number of youth being housed in transitional or permanent homes. We have a significant increase in the number of youth seeking support through programmes. On a side note, I would like to acknowledge the significant impact the Kingston Pem tours have made on this issue. Thanks to this pot of money, we have been able to invest in pilot programmes to address root causes, provide backbone coordination and awareness to help youth know where and how to access help. This is a side note, not related to the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan, I just had to throw that in. We intend to adopt a similar approach when developing the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. Some of the creed principles that we have used to successfully address community planning are collective work through multi-sectoral partnerships, a shared responsibility and vision, identifying priorities, listening to the voice of those impacted the most, addressing root causes, investing in prevention and having an evidence-based approach to this with solid outcomes measure and a measurement plan. At the end of the day, we believe this Safety and Wellbeing Plan will help us achieve sustainable community where people feel safe and have a sense of belonging and opportunities to engage. This fits with the United Way's vision of a community where people live with a sense of hope, dignity and a sense of belonging, and it fits with your City of Kingston vision of a sustainable community with engaged residents. As legislated, the community itself will be made up of representatives from the Chief of Police, a member of the Police Board, the City of Kingston, Public Health, Addictions Mental Health, Indigenous Communities, Social Services, Youth Custodial Services and Education. Our United Way has agreed to provide coordination to bring this together and to engage members of our community in a meaningful way. Our role will be to help facilitate the planning process, jointly developing priority risks, identifying local needs, strategies, looking at what's already happening, mapping out what's happening, determining the right sectors and agencies to be involved and identifying any overlaps or gaps in service or programming. Through all this, we will weave in the voice of individuals with lived experience, agencies and families, as their voices are most critical to the process. I look forward to working with our partners on this and having a plan ready for you by the end of 2020.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I do have a couple of questions, and this is mostly based on the information that I received through the media, mostly when the legislation was first introduced, so it's not to do with the report. But the, that information suggested that there would be a sort of a, and it is, I guess it is to some extent, the risk intervention part of the report, is intervening and identifying areas where there are high numbers of calls to police services, for example. So, is that, is, is that part of the exercise? And if so, do you have any concerns regarding potential for racial profiling, that type of thing, or any sort of profiling as part of this?
I don't see that as an issue, because certainly some of the work we're already doing is trying to reduce the number of police interventions, because for someone with mental health, for example, police intervention is more traumatic than having someone who's experienced in dealing with people with addictions and mental health. No harm to our police, they're very professional, but it's just the uniform can trigger something. So, again, we're already working on some of those issues with the hospital, with the police, because the safer we can make spaces where people can go when they have issues, the better off they are in the future, their recovery is better. So, I don't see this as increasing racial profiling from anything that I've read, but certainly we'll keep that in mind as we go forward.
Thank you. And then the next question is to do with social development, considering, like, if you could give any examples on what that might look like, and also whether or not there are any funds attached to that part of the initiative that are coming from the provincial government?
I have not heard of any funding. We're kind of, one of the reasons we've stepped up is because there is no formal funding. We do this coordination and community planning as, as part of what we do. So, we're throwing in our staff and my resources, my time as resources. Between the police, the city and the United Way, we'll find a way to make sure that we have adequate funds for consultation. I don't see any other major expenses, but if we ever hear of funding, absolutely we'll take it.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no further delegations this evening. We have no briefings. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, we do have one motion of congratulations moved by councillor Chappell, seconded by councillor Hutchison, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Sophia Debednier of Kingstown Public School for being awarded the City of Kingston Best Environmental Project Award for her project titled "Incentives to Recycle" at the 48th Annual Frontenac Lennox and Addington Science Fair Awards Ceremony, held on Friday, March 29, 2019, at MacArthur Hall Auditorium. Congratulations, Sophia. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, we have no deferred motions, so we will move on to reports. First, we have report number 29 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Osannick, that report number 29 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
Okay, so we're going to separate clause one, because we do have to put a councillor name in there. Are there any other separations? Councillor Osannick?
Yes, number six, the mobile parking payments, please.
Councillor Stroud?
Number three, please.
Councillor Hutchison? Okay, so we'll first vote on item four and five. Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Ostrav? That is number three.
Number three.
Number three. Okay, it's been separated. Okay, so first, we will call the vote on clauses four and five. Number four is agreement to supply recycling processing services to the township of Frontenac Islands, and number five is City of Kingston Asset Management Policy. Please vote. Okay, clause one, Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. We need a volunteer to sit on this committee. Councillor McLaren, you're volunteering. Are there any other volunteers? Councillor Chappell? Okay, so we will, Mr Clerk, can we conduct a vote, please? Oh. Mr Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so, Mr Clerk, do we have that, do we have that amendment ready to go? Okay, so, the report actually speaks to a representative of both the Police Services Board and City Council, so there is actually no need to do a vote. There's actually space for both, since councillor McLaren is already on the Police Services Board and councillor Chappell is on council. So, with the consent of, with the consent of council, we will amend clause one. Can I get that up on my screen, please?
So, just for clarity, councillor McLaren will be representing the board and councillor Chappell will be representing the city as a member of council.
Councillor Kyle, point of order?
Point of order, yeah. Do we have the ability to say that on behalf of the Police Services Board at this point?
So, Mr Clerk? So, councillor Kyle, that's a great question. So, I will speak as the current Vice Chair of the Police Services Board, noting that currently there are only three members that are in Kingston. There's a fourth member who's in Australia for the next few months, and so it is councillor McLaren, myself, and then the Chair, Andrew Risc. So, while I'm sure the Police Services Board would be happy to ratify that, I don't think that that would be any concern at all.
Thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion to amend, then moved by, can I keep the Chair for this? Thank you. Okay, so, so I will move this and, seconded by councillor McLaren. So, we will call the vote on the motion to amend, please. So, that then gives two names, both for councillor McLaren and for councillor Chappell on the item. So, now, we will vote on, we will now vote on item number one, as amended. Hold on. So, again, just noting that the, this will also be reaffirmed at the next meeting of the Police Services Board. Councillor Holland?
I just had a couple of questions and comments on the report. So, the, I guess the first question is, I see that the plan is meant to be adopted. I mean, what then, like, will there be ongoing direction from the province, or does each municipality develop a plan that is entirely their own plan, that serves the best interests of their citizens? Where does the relationship with the province end with this?
Miss Hitchen?
Through you, your worship. The province is responsible for receiving our plan at the other end, but there's no indication that they're part of the process. So, it is a local process. Every municipality has to create a plan. They were pretty prescriptive in terms of what it needed to look like, in terms of what areas needed to be covered and who sat on the advisory committee, but in terms of what the priorities are at the other end and how we go about getting there, as long as we stick to their guidelines, I think we'll be fine.
And so, then, but the plan does come back to council for council's approval prior to going to the province. Okay, and then, just a few comments. So, I guess that, I do appreciate the rationale for this type of advisory group, and I have, I have a lot of faith that we'll start to see a comprehensive set of ideas to help us work towards eliminating a lot of the root causes, underlying problems, many that are health problems, and lots of income inequality and all that, that is at play here. I'm, I'm not delighted by this sort of, what seems to be an attempt to demonstrate that there is some, something happening in the area of law and order, or improving security. There are a lot of assumptions that are at play. I think, you know, again, just like to emphasise that I have, that I'm really pleased to see the composition of this group, and I have a lot of optimism, but I would like to just caution that the, the stigma is that, the stigma that many people have been dealing with in this city for a long time, particularly in certain areas of the city, that whatever work that takes place doesn't exacerbate any of those, any kind of underlying assumptions about particular neighbourhoods or particular groups of people. And I have a lot of concerns that, you know, directing, directing this kind of work to take place with an assumption that everyone will feel safer is somewhat problematic. I think it, the intention really behind it ought to be that we have a real vested interest in improving the lives of individuals who are living with mental illness and living in poverty. And if that were the approach, that would be wonderful, but I do remain hopeful that, that there will be some good insights provided by this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hutchison?
Thank you, your worship. Couple of technical questions. First off, what, if I may direct it to staff, what is a situation table, and how does it work?
Miss Hitchen?
Through you, your worship. It's a group of service providers in the community who receive referrals for very high-risk people in our situation table. It tends to be a lot of young people, but basically, they pull together their resources and come up with a strategy that will work for the person, the client they're talking about, and, and advocate on their behalf and pull those resources together to help the person. The cases are usually people who are in quite a level of crisis. And that's been going on now for at least three years in our community, so it's been working very well. So, we'll build on their expertise as part of the planning process.
Good, thank you. And what are, when it says engage non-traditional groups in crime prevention efforts, what are non-traditional groups? I presume police are traditional, but what are the non-traditional groups?
Through you, your worship, non-traditional would be, for example, the YMCA and groups that are, are age-friendly advisory committee groups that aren't tasked with crime prevention as part of their normal mandate, but will have some insights they can provide to the advisory committee on what issues they're dealing with, what their experience in the community. So, basically, looking outside of the normal stakeholders we might go to when you think about crime prevention, and make sure that we're as inclusive as we can be.
Thank you. One last question, and councillor Holland's question sort of touched on this. This is initiated by the province, as the municipality, we must respond. And then you said that we will come up with a plan, and then we'll submit it to the province, and I guess it's G A R N A after that. So, whose programme is it? And, and will it operate under whose authority? Like, and who's going to be responsible for the results? That's, that's essentially what I'm most interested in, as far as the city is concerned.
Miss Hitchen?
Through you, your worship. We haven't received a lot of detail on what happens post-December 31, 2020, in terms of where our recommendations will sit, and if there might be resources available to help address those issues. We're not planning with the assumption that that's going to happen. I think our planning process from our preliminary discussions between the city and the police and United Way thus far have really been around pulling together a lot of the activities already going on in our community. We have a lot of planning tables right now, dealing with a lot of related issues like the opioid drug strategy committee, et cetera. So, it's really pulling together the best of what's going on already, and then seeing where there might be additional gaps that we need to address. But most of us are looking at this as an umbrella document that will build on what's already happening and try as much as we can to leverage resources already existing in the community, so that the city and/or our community partners won't find themselves needing to look for extra resources which may not be available.
Great, thanks very much, and I just want to say thank you to United Way. This report's quite insightful. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we'll call the vote on clause one. And that carries. Clause two, a word of contract for building automation system service agreement. Councillor Hutchison?
Thank you. I just want, most, most councillors would have seen the email in response to my questions about how this works, and I just wanted to, if they missed it, and share it with the public. The staff have indicated that, that the building automated system is critical to managing the corporate facility's energy consumption in a way that positively contributes to the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, and make sure people are comfortable as well in the passing. And I thought this was important to bring up because of the climate change emergency measure, and so that staff have been working on this for a number of years, and it's, and they are using this special software to do it, and it monitors all the buildings and the facilities, or at least the ones 17 or 18 that are mentioned here. And I think it's important for the, the public to know that the city is moving in this direction already, in terms of combating climate change. And in, I just wanted to add, something on the front page of the Toronto Star this morning is the broad conclusion of a new report for Environment and Climate Change Canada, comes from federal government scientists, that it estimates that the average annual temperature across Canada has jumped by 1.7 degrees Celsius since 1948, more than twice the global average, increase of 0.8 Celsius during that time. And, and this is key, and had a lot, I know for some councillors, when we passed that emergency measure, and that temperatures are expected to keep rising for at least the next two decades, regardless of efforts to slash greenhouse gas emissions that cause climate change. So, I say this because I want to put some weight behind the fact that we passed that emergency climate change motion. We can do things about it, but we have to do them. And there's a great deal that we need to do in terms of, of climate change management strategy, and we, as a corporate entity, have actually done a number of things. And congratulations to staff, and I know they're doing that, and they're also working on other things as well, of which this building automated system is just one. But we're going to have to do a lot more than that, so, and we're going to have to have the community involved. So, I just wanted to underline that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call the vote on clause two, please. And that carries. Number three, road safety enhancements, various locations. Councillor Stroud?
Thank you, your worship. It was a pleasant surprise to receive an email at six o'clock in the morning this week from a constituent who noticed this in the media. This report was reported in the media, and they read it online, obviously, unless they got their paper that early in the morning, but perhaps. Anyways, that's how I found out about it, about this particular report. And I knew it was in the works. I do have a couple of questions, but in general, I'd like to say that anything we do infrastructure-wise to encourage road safety and especially speed limiting, which is the sort of one single most important factor in road safety, is great, and I'm happy to see it. So, you'll notice in the report, some four-way stops at new intersections, which of course will slow down the traffic in those areas, some reduced speed zones, some in school zones, and that was where my first question was. So, the, these areas here, Henderson, Dalgleish, Kirkpatrick, Kingston Road, question to staff. The first three, I believe, or at least the first and third are school zone. I didn't actually look up Dalgleish to see if there's a school there. I think there's a curve there, perhaps. What do we know about the ability of police to enforce these speed limits if we impose them?
It's just simple. Through you, your worship, yes, so, any of these changes that we're, that we're recommending to put in place here, we have worked with the police ahead of time to inform them of those pieces, and then work with them afterwards as part of our conversations about areas in the city in which we've made changes, so that they're aware of that and then can enforce in those pieces. We've also been talking with the police about some of the city's priority areas that are developing as part of the active transportation master plan and upcoming implementation plan, to highlight ways that we can focus on specific aspects, most notably areas around schools and school zone areas, that we can work together on those pieces.
Thank you. So, if I understand the report correctly, just to use those two school zones as an example, there'll be new signage, clear signage saying school zone, speed limit 40, the 40 will be on a sign. Is there anything other than signage that is proposed at, in these areas? Like, I'm thinking of other traffic calming measures such as street narrowing or crosswalks or anything like that.
Mr Sebel?
Through you, your worship. These specific changes are related to speed reductions, but some of the, these are, some, the changes that relate to Kirkpatrick Street are part of a number of changes that we're bringing forward in anticipation of the new high school opening. we're bringing forward in anticipation of the new high school opening. So there'll be, there are some other changes that are coming forward in the future related to parking regulations. We're reviewing the existing crossing guard location, and the always stop and the speed reduction are part of that plan.
I mentioned crosswalks because that came up at strategic planning last week, and I believe there's something along those lines that's going to be in the plan. The exact wording's not written yet, of course. We haven't voted on the final piece. But I guess my point would be, and I'm sure I'm preaching to the converted here with Mr. Semple, but my point being that if you want lower speeds, you have to do more than put up signs. You have to do the comprehensive redesign, and in some cases, actual physical changes to a space, especially narrowing. Narrowing works really well, and bollards, I understand, are coming as well. So anything is great, because we're at the hospital and seeing trauma. Motor vehicle trauma is actually the number one cause of injury in the city, so, by far. So anything we can do to reduce that physically, other than just relying on people's good nature, is excellent, and I applaud these changes. I have one other quick question, just, I think I know the answer. But there was a, there was a zone where my, well, my kids go to school on a busy street, and there's, and I've already brought it to staff's attention. Is it true that you're, there's other work being done in other school areas that perhaps are not part of this report?
Through you, your worship. Yes, so I think in addition to the changes that are outlined in this report, we have a number of projects planned this year as part of our transportation work related to traffic calming and intersection pedestrian signals. So in particular, there's a traffic signal that is being installed at Johnson and McDoel, some wayfinding and pathway work that links north to the schools along McDoel, and an intersection pedestrian signal, a traffic signal on Front Road at Lakeview. It's also designed to support the crossing guard location that's in place.
Thank you. And I look forward to hearing more about all of this at EITP. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Osterhoff, did you want to speak to this? I had you next on my list.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. My question is related to the proposed speed limit changes on Highway 38 between Burrbrook Road and Mackay Bar Road. And generally, I'm sensitive to speed changes in the rural area. People remember, have long memories, and they don't like to see speed changes. But this one is an interesting location, and I'm sure you're very familiar with it. And I, I mean, it only really refers to grades and curves and rock cuts. But there's also two other roads off of that one. And I just wanted to ask if you considered that as well. The Corduke Road, I received a call about Corduke's Road and how it approaches Highway 38 is also a concern. It's a very busy road, for one, because of the RVs. The KOA campground is there, and it is, and morning and evening, a lot of turning, a lot of things happening there. And there's been some, you know, discussions I've had that maybe the turning lane isn't enough for there. But certainly, a speed change there will create additional safety. But if you drive it, like, I probably drive that every day. I know in my own decisions of travelling that we've avoided Corduke's because of the volume of traffic coming down the hill, actually from either direction, is quite dangerous, trying to have the courage to come onto the road, with a trailer or not. So I do applaud this, but I was wondering if you looked at it deeper, and maybe we can talk about that, because of the angle that road comes at it. There's an inherent danger there, and has been brought to my attention a couple of times. Right where Corduke's comes, it comes on an angle, it doesn't hit it on the 90s. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and Harpal Road is there too, and it's right in the rock cut. So I was wondering, like, have you done volume studies on that road? Obviously, we know the traffic is fast, and it must be increasing.
Mr. Semple?
Through you, your worship. By volume studies, you're referring to this section of Highway 38?
Yeah.
Yes, so as part of any assessment, when we're looking at the speeds of a road and the utilization of the road, there is a traffic, traffic counts and studies that are done as part of that work. I don't have the, I don't have the details of that study with me here tonight, but I'd be happy to share those with you. And with respect to Harpal and Corduke's, again, I don't have the details of whether we've assessed those specific roadways, but certainly, you know, hearing of those concerns, we can certainly add that to our list of areas that can be assessed.
Okay, thank you. That would mean a lot to me. And then, in the context of the volume, the turning, there was one more point. Sorry, Mayor. Yeah, so I wanted to at least bring out loud to you the turning lane option, because I know I've received calls from constituents on how grateful they are so far for the Unity Road and 38, and the lights are being done, but it's already better. The safety is already better at that intersection because of the turning lanes. I'm sure you might even know that in your own engineering. So perhaps something like that could be considered for Corduke's, and the volume of trailers and everything going there to the campground, and just the danger that's inherent there. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is Deputy Mayor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. Just wanted to, first, I'm very grateful for the change on Henderson. I know that a number of councillors had expressed concerns about the rate of speed, that drivers are, seem to be going at, it seems to be ever-increasing, and of course, with these changes, it's difficult really to make much of a difference without enforcement. And I know I had a conversation with Commissioner Kidd, and I know that through her and Acting CEO Hurdle, that they've had conversations as well with Chief McNeely. And I can tell you that in my district, and I suspect this is true of other districts as well, there's been a noticeable increase in police presence and enforcement. And I really congratulate you, thank you for that, and I appreciate that. I know that it's been recognized in, certainly in Lakeside District, and I suspect elsewhere. So I wonder if there's any consideration, and I'm sure there has been, but sort of where the conversation might be around the notion of 40-kilometer speed limits for all residential streets in the city, both from a climate perspective and also from a safety perspective.
Through you, your worship. Thank you, councillor. There has been some discussion and consideration for that, and I know that the suggestion has come up through our road safety discussions, but nothing has been confirmed on that. There, I mean, certainly, it sounds like an easy implementation, and perhaps an easy solution to an ongoing problem. Often, in fact, though, as you said, without regular enforcement across the city, it becomes very, very difficult. And then you're setting expectations that we may not be able to meet. So I think at this time, I would say that there's nothing firm on that, and that would be something that we could continue to explore through the road safety plan.
Councillor Neil?
Thank you. And thank you for the report and expanding some of the 40-kilometer zones around schools. I appreciate that. It seems to me, and I may, my memory may be failing me here, but originally, when that came out of EITP, I'm looking to the Chair of EITP, we also suggested some consideration of parks and recreational areas where there was a lot of children using those areas. So if it's possible to have a consideration of that in your future, looking at school zones, that would be very helpful. If this requires a kind of motion through EITP or through council, I'd be happy to bring it forward for your consideration.
Ms. Kidd?
Through you, your worship. We've been having some discussions, and particularly in light of the information that council has provided us in terms of the strategic priorities framework. So we realize that we need to take a look and have some great discussion with committee members around our road safety policies, and looking at ways that we can achieve greater safety levels in the vulnerable areas. That's certainly why we're targeting school zones, perhaps parks, but we're also very, very focused on intersections. So I think lots more of that to come over the next short period of time.
I appreciate that. And I totally support councillor Deputy Mayor Hill's suggestion that we consider 40-kilometer zones. It's my understanding the previous government had toyed with the idea of allowing municipalities to make that the default speed limit, which is now, as I understand it, 50 kilometers. But everywhere where we reduce that, we need to add considerable signage. And to do that across the board, I would totally support that, but there would be an awful lot of expense going into putting up signs, as I understand it. Perhaps you could comment on that.
So I'm just, so I've let this go a little bit, but I do just want to remind council that the item that's before us, our road safety enhances on particular locations. And I only say that because this is a huge, a huge thing that's going to require a lot of policy work, and a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, that's not really for this moment of council. That's something that's going to be built in the strategic plan, that staff are going to do work on, and will have time to flush that out. So allow it. Just a quick comment, councillor Neil, but just a reminder to everybody else around the table that we're dealing with this particular item. You know, so given that, you can just, if you have anything else to add, you can add it.
Through you, your worship, I think, in response to councillor Neil's question, yeah, there are mechanisms under which speed limits can be adjusted for the street, and for an area, and for the city. And I think, again, that is part of the discussion that has been occurring as part of the city's road safety discussions. And certainly, there are costs associated with that related to signage, but also related to education enforcement and the engineering design of what we, of how the roads would need to change in order to encourage that speed as well.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Semple?
Thank you, through you, your Chair. My question is really for the viewers at home, because I have some constituents very concerned about wanting to have stop signs added. I've mentioned this before at the Delmar Providence Court, Atkinson Intersection. And the question is, I know that there's a process that takes place, traffic size and whatnot. Can you just clarify how a stop sign could end up on Atkinson Street in the future?
Mr. Semple?
Through you, your worship. I don't have the specific details about any, about the assessments that we've made on, along Atkinson, but there is a guideline that is in place with the city, was, that was approved by council in 2010, that outlines the process whereby the city considers the addition of always stops, and the way that those are assessed, and then the process whereby that recommendation is made. One note that I would say on that is, the city staff are cautious in recommending always stops for purposes of traffic calming versus encouraging, requiring vehicles to stop. So we are cautious about the way always stops are added in order, where it may just result in vehicles moving, slowly moving through the intersection, and not complying with the regulation.
Okay, next on my list is councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, a quick question about the Kingsdale and Malabar U-turn prohibition. I'm wondering if you could talk about why that was decided upon, similar question to my colleague previous. Was it the residents petitioning that put this location over the top, or were there other factors that were more important than the constituents' perspective on the issue?
Mr. Semple?
Through you, your worship. I mean, certainly, understanding concerns that are brought forward from residents, from the Kingston Police, and through councillors, is part of the way in which the city monitors issues that have developed or may be developing. But those concerns, and I think that information is only the start of the decision-making. So again, there are field observations, guidelines, and other pieces that are reviewed as part of that, that form the overall recommendation that is made.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Doherty?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. When you explore the options of always stops, do you also look at roundabouts as something feasible?
Through you, your worship. When an issue is brought to our attention through any means, I think there's a variety of options that are reviewed. So if a request for an always stop comes in, it's not just reviewed through the lens of whether an always stop should be provided, it's reviewed through the lens of what measure, from a traffic management or a transportation management standpoint, is most appropriate here. And that could include traffic calming measures, some of which include roundabouts.
Councillor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. And through you, I just wanted to give a quick thanks to staff. I know that it's, over a couple of years, actually, there've been lots of engagement with residents in the Kings Court area who've had one new school, and with another new one on the horizon, the new measures are, will be greatly appreciated in the area. Thanks very much.
Okay, so seeing now that we're there, questions, we will call the vote on clause And that carries. Clause six, mobile parking payments. Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. There's no doubt that the pilot project using Honk Mobile was wildly successful, right? We had 95,000 transaction payments last year and $200,000 in revenue. But with that, there was a convenience fee, which the city absorbed, and you can see in the report that it was $23,000, which was more than what we had anticipated. So with the pilot project, that was 10 parking lots, and now we're going to expand it to all the surface lots, adding another eight lots. So, you know, if we continue to absorb that user fee, we could be looking at $40,000 in 2019 for that. And since we just had strategic planning, and we had our budget, so recently, my concern is continuing to absorb those user fees. And I'll just ask Director Semple how much that convenience fee is that Honk Mobile charges right now for every parking transaction.
Mr. Semple?
Through you, your worship. The transaction fee for, is 25 cents per transaction.
So hearing that, if we did pass on that convenience fee to the, you know, the drivers that are using that mobile app, just increasing the fee by 25 cents, you know, isn't that much, not that much onus for the person, you know, paying for their parking pass. But like we just saw, citywide, if the city continues to absorb that, it does work to be, out to be a lot of money, like $23,000. So I do have an amendment to move, if the clerks have that. And that is that the convenience fee associated with the parking payments made through Honk are then added to the parking fee, except for those payments related for, to the cancer center. And we saw in the report that that's 22 spaces right now that are allocated for the, you know, cancer patients, and they can always use those spots somewhere else in, you know, the KGH waterfront lot, or Richardson Beach, or even on Ring Road, if those spots are filled when they try to find the parking. So we would still absorb the user fees for the cancer care patients, but all other users would then absorb that 25 cent cost on their parking pass. And that's what my amendment is.
Okay, thank you. So there's a motion to amend on the floor. Mr. Clerk, can I see you for a moment? Okay, so before we continue off the debate, I'm just going to ask a question of staff. First of all, First of all, is this amendment feasible? And second of all, are there any other comments or information that staff want to give us related to this amendment? So we understand it. Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. It is feasible with the application to add the 25 cent fee to the parking transactions, with the exception of the transactions for, for this segment, which is the cancer clinic patients. So, so it is, it is definitely a feasible thing to do.
Okay, thank you. So is there anybody that wishes to speak to the amendment only? To the amendment only, please. Councilor Neal, and then Councilor Stroud.
Thank you. I'm going to respectfully speak against the amendment. I think this, this comes up, unfortunately, as, I mean, the program has been so successful. And people talk about, everybody hates taxes. It's a very short list of things that we hate more than taxes. One of those things is a parking ticket. The reality is, it pretty much sours your day to walk up to your car and find a parking ticket. And the other is nickel and dime service charges. Why do people get so frustrated with banks and with telephone or cellular services? It's because of all of the nickel and dimes that get added. And it's my understanding that this isn't even tax-related. All of this comes from our parking fees. So this is a convenience that has been highly successful. And yes, there's an added cost to this, but it reduces the number of people who very annoyingly find a parking ticket, at least it gives them the option to avoid a parking ticket. And it also clearly is not faced with the nickel and dime service charges that this proposal would make. So for those reasons, I will respectfully vote against this.
Okay, thank you. To the amendment, Councilor Stroud.
Yes, to the amendment. I'm in favor of the amendment. I did have to think about it. So what is the Honk Mobile app? It's a convenience app, like many apps. Folks have been getting it for free, on our dime, all this time, because of staff's logical rollout and absorbing it as part of the rollout to encourage use, not to add another barrier to use by having an extra fee. However, I think really, in retrospect, we, maybe we should have included Councilor O'Sannick's thinking from the very beginning, because if you're the kind of person that uses an app on a phone, and you're talking about the difference between $2, $2.25, or if you're paying for two hours, you know, the markup of that 25 cent convenience fee is pretty standard for app user fees. And it comes, you know, you're used to paying for things on your phone. I really don't, I really don't think, I think it's the just, it's the fair way to do it, is to just have it transparent. It's like, like you go to an ATM, the convenience fee is $3 to get your money now, and if you don't like that, well, you can wait till you can go to your own bank and you can avoid the convenience fee. It says it right off the bat, many people will still withdraw the money and pay the $3 convenience fee at an ATM because they want the money right now, because they want the convenience. That's why it's called a convenience fee. There's no reason why we should be paying the convenience fee for the user. And I did field test this today when it came up. I asked a couple of people downtown. One, one of them, actually, Councilor McLaren was with me and we asked someone. I asked a couple other people. And basically, they, the thing that they don't like is having to pay for parking. The 25 cent, when you narrow it down to, would 25 cents either way make any difference? It was unanimous that they didn't think 25 cents was going to make a difference. They don't like paying for parking in the first place. So we can't give them free parking. We know what would happen if we gave them free parking. So I would say, this is the right way to go. It's not going to, it's not going to be great to have, if someone stops on the street and say, "You just put my parking up by 25 cents." Well, you say, "Well, you don't have to use your app. You could just put your money in the meter." That's how you avoid the 25 cent fee. So it's, it's an optional voluntary fee. I think it's okay. And thank you, Councilor O'Sannick, for bringing it up.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councilor Chappell.
Thank you, your worship. This was an issue that I had flagged and I mentioned to Councilor O'Sannick, and she's greatly put it into a very well-worded document. I do like the idea of supporting those who are seeking cancer treatment in that area. And the reason why I brought this up as a concern is because we've declared a climate emergency here in Kingston. We have a debt of $420 million. We're trying to increase the use of public transportation and active transportation. And those who use a smartphone have sufficient financial means for any additional app that they wish to use. We're not forcing people to use this Honk app. It's an option. It's a convenience. People pay for convenience, just like the ATM issue. People pay for convenience, go into a convenience store, they'll pay more for a bag of chips or a bottle of pop than they will if they go to a grocery store. And so there is also a very, very strong message brought forward by Councilor McLaren about trying to support the city through non-tax revenue means. And by subsidizing this fee on the backs of the taxpayers, which was very greatly successful at 23 point, almost $24,000, it'll only go up, and that's a larger subsidy going forward. So if we don't have to subsidize this, then it's, it's effectively a net gain for our community. And that's why I was so pleased to second this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Deputy Mayor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. I struggle with this myself. I do see it, as Councilor Neal described it, as sort of a nickel and dime kind of service charge. I suspect that this app has really enhanced people using or paying, actually paying for their parking. And I know that we do, you know, an effective job of enforcing parking, but I'm sure that's a challenge to get there because. I just think that, you know, we should be forthright if we're going to do something around parking fees. If we're, if we feel that we need to up the parking fees in general in order to afford the app, then let's do that. But to, just, you know, and I sort of take exception to the, you know, on our dime, because it's not on our dime, it's on the dime of the folks that are parking there. They're making their contribution in a lot of ways to the tax base of the city, right? So it's, they're, they're, they're making a contribution through gas taxes, they're making all kinds of, and I understand and recognize very, very much the need to try to change people's patterns of behavior in terms of parking, et cetera. But this I see as, as really a bit of a gouge. I know it's not a significant gouge. I don't know how, it's not going to break anybody at the end of the day, but I just think it's one of those things that contributes to people's ill will around service charges and that sort of thing. So I won't be supporting this.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions of staff to help me wrap my head around this. My first question is, the cost of the app, where, where is that funded out of?
Through you, your worship. The, the 25 cent transaction fee, not necessarily a convenience fee, but a transaction fee, is how it is funded. And what that fee covers are all the, the processing fees that we don't have to pay for someone who chooses to pay at a, at a pay and display or meter. So without this app, the only option for someone to pay for their parking is by going to a pay and display machine or a, or a meter to pay. Pay and display machines and meters are very expensive. They're expensive to purchase, they're expensive to maintain, there are servicing and license fees associated with them. So when we, when we add all of those, we, we absorb that in the cost of the hourly rate that we charge. So we're fine with whatever council direction is provided, but when we, when we assess this in the report, we considered it as a cost of processing the payment. We, if there are customer service inquiries around the payment itself, they are handled by Honk, they don't come to our customer service counter. So there are a number of things that added. For context as well, I will say that the app has been very successful, having 95,000 uses over the, over the one-year pilot. That's in comparison to 1.8 million transactions that we process through the meters. So we, we are nowhere near that, and we are absorbing those fees for those transactions within the cost of the hourly rate.
Thank you. So Ms. Kidd took most of my talking points, but that was an excellent, no, that was an excellent answer. I think, I think we need to understand something here, that using a physical parking machine is not free, that there is just as high, if not higher, a cost from using an old technology. So here we would be talking about penalizing people for using a better, cheaper, more sophisticated technology to go back 10 years, rather than embracing something that is newer, more convenient, and actually of lower cost to the city. So while I understand and appreciate the concern that's been raised, you have to compare against the alternative. This would only cost us more in the end. If we want to be a smart city, we do need to encourage people to use these technologies. I'm going to be honest with you. This has been the most popular technology that we have introduced in the last four years. It has absolutely taken the city by storm. It's been a tremendous good story, news story. We're talking about allowing it now in all service parking lots. I think that this is something we want to encourage people to use, not dissuade them to use. And I think Councilor Stroud said it right. If you don't want to pay the extra fee, you're going to go back to the physical parking machine. Is that really what we want people to do? In my view, I think the answer is no. So I also will be voting against the amendment. Thank you. If I can have the chair back.
I return the chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councilor Hutchison.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for stealing all my points. Very good answer from Ms. Kidd. I think Mr. Semple made it clear to me, anyway, when his emails this afternoon, and this was bouncing back and forth, that the cost is covered in all cases by the fee, that you've parking fee. And I think, following the mayor's logic, it would simply be unfair to charge these people for the transaction. It's simply unfair, because we're covering the transactions for all the other people, the other 1.7 million transactions. So I think staff have thought this through, and, you know, with these changes in technology, there's always going to be issues around these things and whether they're actually, how forward-looking are they? And I have some questions that I'll raise when we get back to the original motion, but I can't see supporting this particular amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Boe.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, with the amendment, I'm kind of torn on this, because I understand where it's coming from, and it's trying to put the fee sort of directly where it's related to, which is with that transaction, you charge that extra 25 cent to the person that's actually using the service. And in the grand scheme of things, we've heard we pay for this either way, whether it's through kind of the overall cost of the program or the person directly. So I guess, a couple of questions I have, just for my own clarity, would be, in going with the app going forward, does staff perceive that more and more people will shift this way to the point where we would have less maintenance on the pay and display, and less paper, and less sort of costs being borne by that, to the point where we'd actually be saving money going forward?
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. I cannot say that we anticipate that we will get to the point where we're saving money over, over today's costs of processing. What we did say is that we would monitor it. So the other part of paying at a meter, there's, there's two options. There's paying with coin, and there's paying with a credit card. And the coin option is probably our least, our least desirable option, because then we have to collect it, we have to sort it, roll it, count it, take it to the bank to have it deposited. So that's, that's quite a process. What we did indicate in the report is that we do expect that as we expand this service, that we'll have more users, and we'll monitor it. Just because we've decided to recommend today that we would continue to absorb the fee, it doesn't mean that at some point it shouldn't be reviewed again in the future. We specifically teased this piece out in the report, because we were wrapping up a pilot program. And when, when we discussed the pilot program, this was a topic of discussion. So we wanted to make sure that we had, you know, full disclosure on what we considered.
And just as a follow-up question, when was the last time all of our parking rates went up?
Through you, your worship. January 1st, 2019, the on-street rates and the, and the lots in the high-zone areas, the on-street went from $1.50 an hour to $2.00 an hour. Lots went from $1.00 to $1.50.
Okay, thank you. So that's kind of, I guess, where I'm torn. I totally agree that in the future, that that fee should kind of be borne by the user. I'm just not sure that with the recent raising of rates, how this is going to be perceived by the public, because it really is just throwing another 25 cents on top of that. My other concern would be, sitting on the downtown BIA and some of the downtown areas is, it's, the perception's going to be, this is just going to be one more kind of kick to people to not go downtown. Yes, it only seems like a quarter, but it's going to be like, well, they raised fees in January. It's four months later, the fee's up another 25 cents. So there is lots, there are lots of places across the city where you can go and do things for free, and you can park for free. And I guess my concern would be, this may be one more kind of thing that drives people away from the downtown, at the same time that we're trying to drive them to it. And to follow up on the mayor's point, we are trying to become more of a smart city, so maybe bearing these costs initially while we're adopting the technology is a good way to go, and then building that, kind of phasing those costs in so that they're passed on, not four months after already having parking fees go up, though. So I would have been more in favor of kind of phasing this in or looking at it at a future date. I do understand where it's coming from, and I agree with a lot of tenants of it, but I don't think I can support it right at this minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And through you, there's a quotation from the report that is related to the amendment, and it leads me to a question to staff. It talks about Honk charges being passed on to customers in some other jurisdictions. I'm wondering, what is the general process for other cities using this app, if staff know that? Is it usually passed on to the consumer?
Through you, your worship. It, it varies. So Honk, and it varies with sort of the partners that Honk is with. So they, they are with municipalities, they're with private operators, but they also are with institutions and, and other processes. It varies. It depends from what we've seen with the way in which the program is also being rolled out. So there are some municipalities whereby the, they've replaced their meters and their pay and displays, or are moving towards a full replacement so that it is only an online payment. And that, that municipality has opted to pass that fee along, whereas others are approaching it more in the way that we're describing here.
So through you, Mayor Patterson, to clarify a point that was just made, a municipality that has moved to more and more mobile use is in fact passing that fee on to the users? I want to make sure I heard that correctly.
Mr. Semple.
Through you, your worship. I would need to check the details. There are, there are municipalities that have approached it in both ways, including phasing out their systems and, or phasing or adding or not adding on the fee.
Thank you. And final question from me is, was the subsidy part of the calculation for the fee structure that we passed in December, and then that caused the rates to go up in January?
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. The, the rate increase that was, that was implemented in January of this year was the last of a series of three increases. And there was a significant amount of consultation on the overall rate review that was, was performed. And yes, I can confirm the Business Association members and, and the downtown Kingston BIA Board were, were very keen on if, to support rates being able to go up, having what they called some, some give backs. And introducing this technology was, was very much a part of that conversation.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next on my list is Counsel Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, your worship. Ms. Kidd, you mentioned that we may be reviewing this again at a later stage, so if we don't support the motion today, we may have another opportunity to bring this motion back. At that time, is it possible to have some more statistics and information regarding potential savings? You mentioned staff time, and the life cycle of the machines, and I wonder if we could have some more examples of what potential savings this app could offer?
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. We did indicate in the report that we would monitor this, so perhaps a way to approach it would be, with implementation in the rest of the surface lots that we're adding, we could bring another report in a year, and look at the uptake at that time, and we could include in that, at that time, that report could be more geared to the cost of processing parking payments, and how we could look at different ways.
Counsel Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. While I'm leaning towards supporting this motion, I think it's a good motion, because I think that the time is now. I think, as Counselor Chappelle has said, we've, you know, we know the city's situation, and the debt we carry, and the courage we need now is to have our expenses covered. That's really what we want to do with it. And why should it come out of the parking budget? So, it's not much, and we're going to expand the program. I think now, let's have our, let's know what the costs are, and have them paid for, and keep it going that way. The time is now to do that, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. Just to reiterate, the Parking Reserve Fund is absorbing the cost of this 25 cents per transaction, if I heard you correctly, right?
Through you, your worship. Parking is a cost center, so all fees and revenues come from the Parking Reserve Fund, and are not associated with the tax base.
And this Parking Reserve Fund income was already factored in, based on the older technology of credit cards and coins. Is that correct?
Ms. Kidd.
Yes, that is correct.
So it sounds like we are using old technology, coins and credit cards, to subsidize the newer technology at 25 cents a transaction. So, if we're going to be a smart city, it strikes me that we should be on full-cost recovery basis on any new charges. And if, in the wild hope that we get broad uptake of this, then our entire costs may go down, and at that point, when we take out the credit card and the coins, would be the appropriate time to consider lowering costs, but not now, considering that we are increasing our costs as a result of this. I see this as non-tax revenue, as Counsel Chappelle had mentioned, and the more non-tax revenue that we have, being charged to people who are well enough to own a car, gives us a lot more flexibility with regards to our Parking Reserve Fund. This strikes me as a good way, a good thing, all the way around, from an equity lens, from a fiscal prudency lens. I'm totally in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel O'Zanick, you have the last word.
Thank you. So, whether this amendment passes or fails, we are still going to be going forward with HONK. HONK will continue. It's going to be like a permanent program now, and we're still, with this amendment or not, we're expanding the parking lots that we're offering it, from 10 parking lots to 18. So it's still a wildly successful program. All we're trying to, well, all I'm trying to do, and Counsel Chappelle with this amendment, is to change the $40,000 subsidy. So if it's $23,000 now subsidy that we're providing all taxpayers, whether they own a car or not, they're all paying for this subsidy, then probably doing 18 lots is going to work out to be $40,000 a year. In strategic planning, last week, right, we saw all of our initiatives, and how much of a hit it's, you know, this is definitely, this initiative will take a hit in our operating costs. It was like all the way down. And we have to try to find that money, so that we can actually fund those initiatives we came up with last week. And this was just one way to try to help us achieve those initiatives that we want to go forward over the next four years. This is just a 25-cent, right, transaction fee we're discussing. So if somebody is going to use HONK, they pay an extra 25 cents, and that can save them a $10 parking ticket if their meter expires, because as the time comes up, they just go back to their app, put more money in, it saves them a parking ticket. We're a victim of our own success with this program, right? And so, this will save them a parking ticket, happy users. Is that a $10 parking fee, or maybe even our parking tickets now for an expired meter is $15? I know we've really increased it over the last two years, and it's just for 25 cents, it saves them the hassle of going out there to put a new ticket in their dashboard. And that is what we're trying to achieve here. Keep having happy users, just keep using HONK, right? Happy parkers, but in the same time, saving all the taxpayers $40,000 in subsidy to make them use HONK. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we will call the vote, then, on the motion to amend. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of nine to four. On the motion as amended, Counsel O'Zanick, you still have the floor, if there's anything else you wish to say? Is there anybody that wishes to speak to the motion as amended? Counsel Neal.
I just want to offer up the fact that this charge, and this service, has nothing to do with our tax base, that this is solely covered. So, the decisions we made for priorities are not impacted at all, whether we charge the 25 cents or not. And I just think it's really unfortunate that some people will be faced with, and I'm saying this because...
So I think technically this is in order, because it's now part of, we are not going to re-debate this, Counsel Neal?
That's right. And I'm not going to re-debate this. I just think the public should be aware that if you have a transaction fee, and you renew it, it then costs you 50 cents, some people will be very reluctantly not, and they will be getting tickets, which is really unfortunate. And this is the second time this year, we've increased ticket fees for people. We just increased it January 1st, we're now increasing it again, and that's truly unfortunate.
Okay. So just to be clear, so we've had a really good debate on this amendment. It has passed. So now, I'm going to ask for comments just on other aspects of the report. Point taken. Counsel Holt.
Thank you, your worship. So it's just a quick question, and I don't, okay, regarding, we saw this information from staff in the past, sort of an average cost per parking space, and I'm wondering if the lots involved, let's say we just look at the lots that the HONK app applies to, if you could speak to the cost to maintain a parking space, if you do have that information. I saw it once before and can't remember it.
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. I don't actually have that number in my head right now, and these are our surface lots that we're speaking to. So the number is significantly lower than what it costs to maintain a parking space that's in a parking structure. I just wanted to say that I support the motion as amended. Thank you.
Okay. Next on my list is Counsel Hutchison.
Thank you. I will speak to the motion. The, I'm just curious, is that, we just got this report tonight, so, the, I'm curious as to, basically, when people renew it on the HONK app, they're not present at their car, or at the parking machine. So, I'm wondering if it affects the parking accessibility, as measured by turnover? Because a lot of the money's made by turnover, but that's also, in the downtown area, what businesses want, right? They want turnover. Do your business, leave, somebody else comes in. Otherwise, it gets difficult to operate the system. So do we have any evidence, one way or the other, whether the use of this app encourages people to renew remotely, and therefore reduce turnover and accessibility?
Ms. Kidd.
Through you, your worship. We do have data on the number of transactions that were renewed. They weren't that significant, but that is specifically the reason why we're not recommending expanding this payment option to the on-street spaces. It's the on-street spaces that have the tighter regulations, they're the highest demand, and in the high-demand area, there's generally a two-hour maximum stay. So we're not adding them. In our parking lots, by design, we generally allow for, in many of them, we allow for an all-day stay, or at least a four-hour stay. So we are not concerned that the use of this application is affecting the turnover of spaces in that manner. On-street, different story.
So I take it, even if you, by tracking the data, as I know you will, you're not concerned that, well, you could adapt. You could cut it from four to three hours. You could do all kinds of adaption through the system, and through the app, to allow you to adapt to use it.
Ms. Kidd, correct?
Yeah, through you, your worship. The application actually is smart, and it can adapt to any regulation that we have. So we could program it to restrict a renewal within a 30-minute period of expiration, if that was what we chose to do. So, there are options that are available to do that, and again, we monitored that through the pilot project, and with the way that we've rolled it out, and we are being a bit cautious with it. We do not have that concern at this time.
Okay, that's fine. I'll vote for this. However, unfortunately amended. Thank you.
Counsel Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. I want to focus on the smart aspect of this program, because I remember something that came up when we were discussing Dropbike, and how Dropbike could, the data was very readily accessible and collatable, and we could get reports from them, and we would know the usage, the location, where the bikes were going, all that kind of stuff. Stuff that a smart city needs to grow. So I was saying, is there a secondary advantage to having a mobile app like this for tracking trends, especially over time, to be able to sort of maybe make strategic decisions about parking, because we're getting better collections, or easier, more accessible collections of data from the application provider?
Mr. Semple.
Through you, your worship. Yes, the part of the, part of the way that HONK presents the data back to the city, is we have a portal that allows us to view the transactions in any number of manner, to run a wide variety of reports, and to, and to your point, it allows us to observe trends, or changes in parking behavior of those users, that helps us inform our policies and our operation.
Okay, great. Yes. So, I guess, just all this to say that I would have supported this passing, supports this recommendation, whether or without the amendment, because that aspect, the smart aspect, and the planning, and the tracking trends over time, is very important for fighting climate change, because, let's not forget, the end result is not to make things more convenient, really, for the parker, but to get people to choose other modes of transportation that don't involve single occupancy vehicles. So, with the trends that we get from the parking app, that will inform that as well. So I think it's all good, and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will call the vote on Clause 6 as amended. Please vote. And that carries. On to Report Number 30 from Heritage Kingston.
It's my pleasure to submit Report Number 30, duly moved and seconded, and coffee stained. I'm sorry.
Moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Counselor Doherty, that Report Number 30 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
Okay, so there are a number of clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Counsel Stroud.
328 King Street East, whatever, whichever clause that is.
Okay. So that's the only item under non-statutory consultation. So first, we will vote on Clause 1, and all of the items under Clause 1, applications recommended for approval, statutory consultation. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, now we'll move to Item 2, applications supported for approval by Heritage Kingston, non-statutory consultation, Subclause 1 approval, and application for heritage permit, 328 King Street East. Counsel Stroud.
Thank you. So to remind my colleagues, I no longer sit on this committee, but I did chair it for the last four years, so I know the procedures. And so this particular recommendation is essentially advice, advice from the Heritage Committee. The decision lies with us on applications in Heritage District. This is Market Square, Heritage District. And we have some historical context for this particular application, very similar, parallel across the street, at Jack Astor's. And that actually predates my time on the committee, but apparently there was a discussion at the committee back in the day, when Jack Astor's was coming to Market Square, and people were saying it was incompatible with the heritage nature of Market Square, and so on and so forth. And you could see, you can imagine, I wasn't there, but you could imagine at the committee, some of the discussion around the very presence of a burger joint at Market Square, and whether or not it was heritage-compatible, and to that I would say, well, don't you think they ate burgers back in the 1800s? But, seriously, maybe not A&amp;W Burgers, but, the thing that's not compatible, and you'll see in the comments from the Heritage members that didn't like it, or that sort of went into the nuance, have to do with the branding, the A&amp;W branding, and whether the branding of A&amp;W is compatible with Market Square. So, you could also imagine McDonald's coming to Market Square, and the big golden arches, where would you put those, and how would that be compatible, right? So that's what the A&amp;W branding is kind of like. So you got to say, what is the win-win here, is for the applicant to be able to have this tenant, and make some changes that would clearly identify as the A&amp;W Burger chain, without taking away from the heritage aspect of the Market Square? I think that is possible with the recommendation that's before us, but it's important that staff be very, what is the word, I guess, assertive, with respecting what's in the Heritage plan itself when dealing with the proponent, because, you know, these large corporate entities will be very assertive on their own agendas, so we need to be just as assertive in return, to make sure that they respect the heritage quality of this very important First Capital's, you know, nerve center. So I would say, maybe I could ask, maybe I could ask a question to staff, just reassure me that staff will be assertive in dealing with this proponent, should this recommendation be adopted.
Ms. Segna.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson. So certainly as part of the process that's led us to the staff recommendation that's on the floor tonight, we've worked pretty extensively with the team from A&amp;W, and it has been a process of iteration and change from the beginning. So compared to what some of their original offerings were with respect to the exterior treatments of the building, certainly, they've been very responsive to all of the direction from staff, in terms of changing color, changing material, looking at the type of branding, while still trying to be consistent with the corporate branding. So I'm pretty confident that the team is, has been very receptive, and will continue to be so, and certainly staff will be there to implement all of the elements of the recommendation, should council decide to support it.
That's great. And I would just draw attention to the aspect where I mentioned about Jack Astor's. Being their, a near neighbor that is also in the food and hospitality... Being their near neighbor that is also in the food hospitality and also has an identifiable brand, and they also had to change their look and the branding and so on, whatever you're doing with the negotiations or the work with A&amp;W, you don't want to single out Jack Astor's as having been disadvantaged or special favors given to A&amp;W, I suppose you could put it that way. So I just want to point that out as well, and I'm confident in your ability and good luck with that, and I plan to support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Neal?
Yes, thank you. I am sitting on the Heritage Committee. I support the recommendation. I know they went through a number of discussions with our staff, and this did come to the Properties Working Group, and there was an opportunity for input from the committee. And the proposal as it now stands, I think, is an improvement, definitely an improvement over the original. When I was in Toronto two weekends ago, there's a very tastefully done A&amp;W just north of College on Young Street that isn't jarring, that fits in with the building. So I think that this won't be a problem. I will give a heads up that the branding and the color and all of that has been modified for what we control, which is the outside of the building. The issue might be that on the inside of the glass windows, we have no way of addressing that aspect of it, as I understand it. So I think this is a healthy compromise, and I look forward to not seeing bright and gaudy on the inside of the glass branding that goes on. But that's something that, as I understand it, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, that's not something that we can control. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Agnew?
Thank you, and through you. So Councillor Neal is correct, the way that the Designation Bylaw and the attributes that it speaks to, it talks about windows or fenestrations, it talks about the size and the layout of them, but it's not talking about interior features of the building as it relates. So that would be correct, that the purview of this application specifically is looking at the exterior applications.
Councillor Shipp?
Thank you, through you, Your Worship. A&amp;W is a Canadian icon, and I think it's great that we have a family-valued restaurant moving to the downtown core, especially across the street from our great Market Square with the ice skating opportunities. I mean, I can talk to Councillor Oosterhoff about buying a burger for me this evening, and I would have much preferred a Teen Burger, to be honest with you. So I'm actually very excited about having A&amp;W in the downtown core.
Thank you. So we will call the vote on Clause 2. And that carries. Okay. Nothing from Committee of the Whole. We have no information reports, no information reports, members of council, miscellaneous business. We have a couple of motions. Number one, that the resignation of Sarah Cadu from the Central Kingston Grove Strategy Working Group be received with regret. If a mover, please. Moved by Councillor Neal, seconded by Councillor O'Sanick. And that carries. Number two, that notwithstanding Section 3.1.4, subsection 5 of the Illumination of City Facilities policy, Kingston City Council approved the illumination of City Hall and Springer Market Square in purple on May 19th, 2019 for World IBD Inflammatory Bowel Diseases Day. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Councillor Holland, seconded by Councillor Doherty. And that carries. We have one new motion, so I will turn the floor over to the Deputy Mayor.
I kept the chair and recognized you. Am I recognizing you?
Actually, if you can read the motion.
Read the motion, okay. So moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Councillor Holland, that whereas in quarter 1, 2019, council approved a number of motions with respect to council strategic planning sessions, and direction to staff to provide report identifying up to $24.2 million in deferrals of capital reserve fund expenditures in advance. Do I need to read all this or just the motion? Yes, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, okay. Of capital reserve fund expenditures in advance of the final day of the strategic planning sessions being April 17, 2019, and whereas the provincial budget is scheduled to be released on April 11, 2019, which could have an impact on the financial planning for the city's council strategic priorities, and whereas city staff will need sufficient time to assess any such impacts and update the financial information to be brought to council, therefore be it resolved that the council's strategic planning session scheduled for Wednesday, April 17, 2019, be rescheduled to Wednesday, May 1, 2019, commencing at 6:00 PM in Room 312 Goodas Hall, Queen's School of Business, Queen's University, 143 Union Street, Kingston, Ontario. It being understood that the staff report identifying up to $24.2 million in deferrals of capital reserve fund expenditures shall be redirected for consideration by council in advance of May 1, 2019. So that is on the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I thought we had an excellent three days last week, lots of great discussion, lots of great thinking, and part of me wishes that we could have council meetings like that more often. Just the format and the change really creates opportunities for some exciting collaboration and work together. But of course, now we know that the work has now shifted back to city staff to now take a look at the priorities and the ideas that we put forward and to start to draft a financial plan around that to help us understand what sort of choices we're going to need to make in order to be able to achieve the plans that we put forward. So originally, we were supposed to meet again on April 17, but it was in thinking that once we realized that the provincial government will be releasing its budget on an April 11, that there could be some important financial implications for the city that could come down as part of that budget, and it likely wouldn't allow staff enough time to be able to incorporate those changes into the financial plans that would be coming back to council if we were meeting again on April 17. So it seemed that it would be unwise to me that we would go through all the effort of coming up with a financial plan that would work for our priorities and then have to redo the exercise after taking into account any additional financial implications for the provincial government. So essentially, that's the idea of this motion, is that we would simply delay our next strategic planning meeting to give staff that time to be able to incorporate those financial implications into that financial planning. Now, I do have an amendment, and this came from consultation that I know that for a couple of councillors around the table, there was a concern with May 1. And I do think it's important that we have absolute full attendance for this. So I am putting forward this motion to amend, which is simply to find a date where we were sure that everybody would be available, and that would be at the May 7, which is currently reserved for the first council meeting in May. So we would have the council, we would have the strategic planning session on May 7, and then we would bump our regular council meeting to the following night, May 8. So I suppose first I'll just put forward that motion to amend, and certainly if anybody has any concerns with the amendment, I'm happy to speak to that first, and then once we've dealt with that, I'm certainly happy to speak to any concerns about the motion as a whole.
Are there any concerns with respect to the amendment? There being none, we'll vote? Yes? Oh, sorry.
We're going to vote on the amendment, then we'll come back to the regular, okay. I have a question for you. Okay.
One more, please.
Okay, that carries, and so we're back to the amended motion. Is there any questions regarding the, Councillor Hutchinson?
Sorry, didn't realize you couldn't see me. Just on the last bit, where it says, being understood that staff report identifying up to $24 million in deferrals of capital reserve fund expenditures be redirected for consideration by council in advance of May 1. Not quite sure what that means. I take it it will come to us as a report before May 1? Is that what it means?
So yes, so council, recall that we had, we passed a motion a couple of council meetings ago, asking for additional information around up to $18 million for affordable housing and another additional funding for roads. And what we had agreed is that we asked staff to provide us that information in advance of our April 17 session. So essentially, this is now turning the clock back on everything. So the reason for that wording is to preserve the intent that the information that we asked for will come in advance of this session, which now will be May 7. But again, that we will get that in advance of May 7 so we can consider it.
So we're actually going to have more time to consider what the report says?
That's right.
And the clerk will send it out. We'll know about it. Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. And that carries, and I return the chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, are there any notices of motion? Councillor McLaren?
Thank you. So moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Kylie, whereas the City of Kingston needs to attract and retain people to live, work, and play, and whereas people cannot adequately live, work, and play without a living wage, and whereas the mayor's task force on poverty reduction report recommended a living wage, and whereas the additional cost to the city to implement a living wage for all direct, full-time municipal employees is exactly zero because they are already above the living wage, and whereas the City of Kingston can incentivize our contractors, partners, and other organizations in the public's private and nonprofit sectors with purchasing policies and criteria for awarding contracts, therefore be it resolved that a living wage policy be developed based on the Ontario Living Wage Network Certification Program and be applied to all direct, full-time municipal employees, and that the City of Kingston's living wage policy develop a preferential consideration for any contractors and partners who have a living wage policy. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Councillor Holland, seconded by Deputy Mayor Hill, that the minutes of city council meeting number 2019-11, held Tuesday, March 12, 2019, be confirmed.
And that carries. There's some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Moved by Councillor Kylie, seconded by Councillor Oosterhoff, that bylaws 1, 4, and 5 be given their first and second reading.
That carries.
Moved by Councillor Kylie, seconded by Councillor Oosterhoff, that bylaws 2 through 8 be given their third reading. One more, please.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councillor Bohm, seconded by Councillor Neal.
Two more, please. Still waiting for two.
So the rule is we can't leave until everybody's voted to adjourn.
Still waiting for one.
And that carries. Thank you very much.